Good evening.
I could even, welcome.
Thank you very much.
If you want to just tell us exactly what you're doing, then I'll turn it to the town manager.
Certainly, I'm the new recorder of Aleppo Temple. Peter K. Stone was the other one. There was an election of offices in January and I, if you call it, I won with the responsibilities that go with it. And along with that is the liquor license for the building. Basically, we'll be using that area for festivities and graduations and to support the chambers duties and support some of the stuff of Rotary that's come up and coming.
Let me tell you, you've got a great, you have a great organization. They always step up and help the town. It's a great organization. And I'd like to turn it to the town manager, Jeff.
Yes, so as part of this process, there's a requirement with the ABCC for the Board of Selectmen to grant the, an authorization for change in managers. And there's a form, so-called Form 43, that if the board is so inclined, would sign and submit to the ABCC to authorize the transfer of managers. And by way of information, the request was reviewed by the police chief. He writes, "The Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the application presented by Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, for an application to change the manager from Peter K. Stone to Ernest A. Pearlstein. The police department has conducted a review of Mr. Pearlstein and recommends approval of the application request."
All right, very good. If there's any questions, comments, or motions at this time?
I move to grant the request as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to just make a comment before we take the vote. I just want to say, Mr. Pearlstein, since we have you here, I'm certainly going to vote in favor and I'm delighted to have you here this evening. I do want to say, kind of ironically, we have folks from the Fourth of July Committee here.
Yeah.
I want to express our appreciation to you and your entire organization for really stepping up and making what will be our Fourth of July in Wilmington possible at your property. So, thank you and please extend that on our behalf, or at least on my behalf.
I will carry that message on, but I would like to add that we are not at all taking anything away from what you're doing here in Wilmington, as far as the common and the fact that you celebrate this Fourth of July on the common. We're just an added addition to what's going on that day and very proud to do it, as I am, a Wilmington, from Wilmington, brought it up and gone to all the schools here in Wilmington, so it's a pleasure to, when I just joined Rotary, as I was telling the chief a few minutes ago, working with Chris Neville and a few gentlemen on that committee, I actually washed cars at Kane's, Fred's place when I was in high school, so.
Wow.
And Wilmington Ford. So, I look forward to working with the Rotary and especially the committee here. Anything that we can do at Aleppo to improve what we do in Wilmington, we're there for you. And I appreciate this, this opportunity to talk here. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are those in favor? Voting unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you.
Wish you luck, sir. Thank you.
Our next appointment is the recognition of Kevin J. Eberly and Stephen D. Hunt, Department of Public Works. Just to, if those gentlemen are here in the audience, Stephen and Kevin work in the Parks and Grounds Division at the Public Works Department. They were en route to the middle school fields to prepare the sprinkler system to be activated when they observed smoke coming from a home. Steve called 911 while Kevin went to the door to alert the family. He then went around the back of the house and observed smoking coming out of the basement. He went into the back door to see if anyone was inside. Children were sleeping in the downstairs area of that home. He advised the residents to get everyone out of the house. Stephen and Kevin assisted with getting children out of the house. Police and fire arrived on the scene and they took over from there.
Guys, you don't want to agree, you guys are heroes. You guys did an outstanding job and not only does a town of Wilmington get a great bang for their buck, they get heroes as well. And, and I'm going to just turn it to any member of the board that would like to say anything.
I mean, I think it's great that the chairman has you here. I think the, you know, the point of the recognition is obvious. There's not a whole lot we need to say, other than, you know, it's the kind of thing we, we all hope we would conduct ourselves in the way that you did in the same situation. So, you know that in hindsight, that you did everything you were supposed to do and that you could have done and you ought to be very proud for that.
I agree. I thank the chairman for having you here. Great idea. I know he's both and just another example of Wilmington residents and employees going above and beyond. And like Slipper Newhouse said, you would like to think we'd all done the same things, well, you did it. So, you had the opportunity to step up and you did it. Thanks, guys.
Who's Steve and who's Kevin? Steve and Kevin? Yeah, you guys, it exemplifies what being a good neighbor is about. We're all supposed to be and hopefully are, looking out for each other out in the community and our neighbors are the folks that we, you know, if you see something happening, taking action and not just assuming someone else will take action. So, you know, again, hopefully you live as an example to the folks that witness and hear about the actions that you took and hopefully the next time someone else is in that same position, they'll take action too. So, thank you for taking that action and kudos to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get the microphone?
I'm really proud of the effort of the board to give out a couple of citations here if I could, boys. First of all, Kevin, it's a Town of Wilmington certificate of recognition. May be known that a certificate has been presented to Kevin J. Eberly in recognition of his lifesaving actions, and that really means a lot, on Monday, March 31st, 2014. And it's offered by me on behalf of the whole entire Board of Selectmen, and we want to thank you for that. And also, to the other.
I think I already said the application.
And once again, Town of Wilmington certificate of recognition may be known that the certificate has been presented to Stephen D. Hunt in recognition of his lifesaving actions on Monday, March 31st, 2014. And I'm proud to offer it on behalf of this great Board of Selectmen. And if you guys want to do, take a picture right here. Guys, once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scaram, not too long ago, and these two gentlemen, outstanding. All right. Just let me give them a moment to leave. Seven ten appointment, Scott Grant, Chairman, Fourth of July Committee, request to use municipal parking lot in Town Common for the annual Fourth of July festivities. Mr. Grant, welcome. How are you tonight?
I'm well. How are you, Mr. Chairman?
Good, very good.
Members of the board, thank you. Well, we're back on. In summation, a little bit different this year. The event will run, the celebration will run from Wednesday, July 2nd through Saturday, July 5th. The events on Wednesday, July 2nd are planned to take place on the Town Common. We'll have our traditional dinner provided by Rotary that evening and Rotary will be sponsoring a performance by a band. We'll have the ladies' two-mile walk, road race, wiffle ball, horseshoes, and then at 8:45, there'll be a movie on the common sponsored and presented by the Rotary Club. And Thursday, July 3rd, as Mr. Pearlstein noted and Mr. Shampoo noted, we will be up at the Shriners, where we'll have dinner, a band, nonprofit groups, community groups, and we'll have the carnival pending Board of Appeals approval, and that hearing is on May 14th. Friday, July 4th, we'll have our traditional Family Day events, approximately 80% of those events, on Friday morning at the Town Common, beginning at 7:00 in the morning with breakfast, and will run until 12:30. That point in time, we'll shut down the common. Half hour before that, 12:00, the carnival will open up at the Shriners and continue through the evening with dinner, again, concerts, the nonprofit groups. And then on Saturday, we'll be entirely at the Shriners, beginning at 12:00 noon, running until 11:00 PM. Again, community groups, carnival, dinner, and we'll have our ceremony at 7:30 dedicated to veterans and current service members and fireworks planned for that evening, pending approval of the fire marshal. See. As always, the, the committee wishes to thank the businesses of Wilmington that are very generous in supporting this event, as well as the community organizations. And this year, we extend a heartfelt thank you to the Aleppo Shriners and to their general manager Sheila Bissette and her staff, who've been incredibly accommodating for all that we'd like to do to present this event to the community this year. So, the formal request for you gentlemen is to use the Town Common area, the municipal parking area, on Wednesday, July 2nd, and Friday morning, July 4th. Then I have a second request.
This is a no-brainer for me. I'm excited about it and I, unless there's a, an objection by any of the department heads, Jeff, I would, I would make the motion that we approve the request.
There's no objections from the departments, no?
All right, there's a motion made and then I think we should make a quick, is there a motion? Is there a second to that? Motion, second. I just want to say, Mr. Grant, you said two words, "It's on," and I don't think you need to say anymore. You've done a great job and it's, it's on, and that's wonderful. All right, motion made, there's a second. All those in favor? And it's unanimous? And once again, thank you. We appreciate everything you do and all the volunteerism. Many times Lou said this town is really great in volunteerism and you guys stepped up to the plate and you did it again. And we want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the second request, as we've done in the past, in order to protect the nonprofit, Wilmington-based nonprofit groups and their sales, we would ask the board to exercise its power in prohibiting professional hawks and peddlers from being within a half mile of the Town Common area on July 2nd and July 4th, when we're there, and on those times that, which would be July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and as I'm fond of saying, the unnecessary rain date of July 6th on Fordham Road.
I see the town manager writing down the dates and if there's no questions, if there's a motion as mentioned and described by Mr. Grant?
I'd make a motion of that effect.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Shampoo. All those in favor? And it's unanimous? And we're in a great mood today. Anything else?
I don't have any more requests, but if I may have a moment, this is the plan that we've developed for the Shriners and which will be presented to the Board of Appeals for a special permit for the carnival. I'd just like to take a moment to present it to the board and to the public at large watching at home. This, sorry if I'm blocking anybody, this is Fordham Road and this is the Shriners building proper. The parking lot area over here is where the carnival is planned to be set up. In front of the building, we will have the stage here with the speakers facing away from the carnival. The community groups will be here and the Shriners are allowing us to use their dozens of picnic tables, which will be setting up for people to eat under, or, excuse me, eat at. We will not have a tent for, set up there for people to eat under because we'll be using the fez room in the event of rain. And the band will move inside, the meals will move inside. This circle that gentlemen can see here is the radii for fireworks, and that's mandated by the fire marshal. It's 420 feet from the setup, which is right here, and there's emergency access here. This parking at the cul-de-sac at the end of Fordham Road at the Shriners property will be maintained for handicap parking. There will be committee and community group parking here. Again, fire access here, fire access maintained all the way around the building in excess of code. And lastly, this area here will be maintained as a public viewing area for folks to walk up, set up their chairs, set up their blankets if they wish, and be, for most people, closer to the fireworks than they ever have been in Wilmington. So, that's the plan we'll be presenting to the Board of Appeals on May 14th.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Real briefly, Scott, while I have you, that area that you said would be sort of saved as the viewing area.
Yes.
I'm not very good with these maps. Can you give me a sense of scale of that area as compared to, I guess, the, the main area of the Town Common, not including the hill and the park, the parking lot?
No, I can't.
Okay. Good answer. I'm just trying to get a gauge of what I'm looking at. I apologize.
Well.
Will there be other viewing areas?
Well, you're certainly going to be able to, this is where the nonprofit groups will be set up and the picnic tables, et cetera. You're certainly going to be able to see the fireworks from there.
Okay.
Based upon my experience, you're going to be able to see the fireworks from 93.
Yeah. Can you tell us what the plan will be or what you're thinking the plan will be? I imagine it's evolving for parking during the events and the activities that go on throughout the.
There won't be any public parking here.
Okay.
Police and fire departments have been communicating with the businesses along Fordham Road to gain permission for parking and Chief Begonis tells me they have been tremendously successful and parking will not be an issue. On the fireworks evening, Saturday night, as we have in the past, we're going to run our shuttle buses from around town to, to the Shriners property.
Great. Great. That's all the questions I can think of now. Last comment, I'll simply say is a compliment to you and to the entire Fourth of July Committee for basically cranking it up a notch. I mean, it was, I understand there was a lot of sort of frustration and maybe miscommunication and whatever, but that's water under the bridge, but the fact that we got to, we, the fact that you got to this point collaboratively with the town and with the other organizations, again, I want to compliment the Shriners organization, but it's kudos to a lot of people for coming together and working together and, and finding a compromise. So, thank you very much for sticking to it.
All right. All right, Mr. Grant, I'll say, and a lot of goes to this gentleman here to my left, the town manager. He put a lot of stuff together as well and a lot of credit goes to the manager as well. All right, Scott, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a nice night. All right, our next appointment is myself, chairman, presentation of the Board of Selectmen's annual report for the calendar year 2013.
All right, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it is with great honor that I submit our annual report highlighting the board's work during the course of 2013. The board remains committed to the principle that to the greatest extent possible, local government services, including police, fire, public facilities, maintenance roadway and park infrastructure, maintenance library, elder affairs, and education, to name a few services, should be provided through existing revenue streams. There continues to be a conscious and deliberate effort to avoid fees for student participation in athletics or music, for student transportation, for trash collection, or for other services. The expectation for our new town manager, Jeff Hull, and his administration was to craft a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, that continued the practice of estimating revenues conservatively, holding the line on expenditures, while at the same time providing reasonable compensation to employees, making long-term investments in our facilities and maintaining a reliable vehicle fleet. Through our initiative workings with the town administration and with the support of the town meeting, an investment over $1.6 million is being made in replacing all North Intermediate School windows and two boilers, original to the school's replacement of nearly 10,000 square feet of roof, and at the Western Intermediate, has been authorized in a sum of $185,000. An appropriation of $249,500 was authorized to address upgrades to technology in the school department, including interactive smart boards at the middle school and personal computers at the North and West Intermediate. The board remains mindful of the needs to spend taxpayer dollars wisely, while at the same time addressing long-term maintenance to ensure these facilities. Currently relied upon and remain capable of providing services many years to come. After a delay of one year in the construction of a new high school due to needless appeals by project opponents and abuddists to the property, the final appeal was dismissed by Superior Court Judge Peter Croup in September. In January, Selectmen endorsed the town manager's desire to authorize the construction manager at-risk Gilbane Construction Company to award contracts for work to avoid further delay. The decision proved to be the right one as the court appeal of the Department of Environmental Protection's final order conditions was denied. Since that time, significant progress has been made on the high school project. Demolition of the gymnasium has been completed. The artificial turf at Athletic Field was ready in time for Wilmington's first football game in September. While the Wildcats sustained a disappointing loss in their last second of play at the hometown crowd turnout enforced to witness a beautiful turf field and new solar-powered scoreboard, construction of the high school has continued throughout the year, with cement floors poured and the exterior shell of the building complete. As anticipated, the construction of the new high school will require a change in the annual Fourth of July celebrations in 2014. Selectmen are in agreement with the town manager's decision not to allow launch enough fireworks from the high school campus due to the nature of ongoing construction and the risk of damage to our new facilities. While it is unclear whether the Fourth of July Committee will conduct the annual event next year, the board believes that the event is an essential part of what makes Wilmington special and hopes that this long-lasting tradition will continue. The town suffered a tremendous, tremendous loss during the events surrounding the Boston Marathon bombing. Many lives were changed and in the most senseless act of violence, Wilmington lost one of our own. Sean Collier was the son of Wilmington and was on his way towards a promising career in public service as a police officer. He lost his life in the line of duty, performing that work that was his passion. Through the horrific events of that week of April 22nd, Wilmington stood as one, rallying around each other and the family of Sean Collier. The ceremonies held at the Town Common to pay tribute were solemn and moving, but demonstrated the strength of Wilmington as a community. Officer Collier will forever remember as a hero to all of us. The manufacturing sector has been struggling for many years nationally and Wilmington has not been immune to those struggles. However, the town's tradition of hosting strong manufactured companies that remain on the cutting edge continues and was on display at the unveiling of Textron's patent heat shield technology in July. Town officials, including board members, were invited along with the representatives from NASA and state and federal officials to learn about the deployment of a heat shield to be used as part of NASA's Orion mission to Mars. The heat shield was, is designed to protect the capsule and astronauts from harsh environmental of deep space. It's just one example of the innovations that continue to occur here at companies here in the town of Wilmington. The board was presented with a tremendous opportunity to acquire nearly eight acres of undeveloped prime land next to St. Dorothy's Church. As Wilmington continues to grow and develop, the amount of land suitable for construction of public facilities, athletic fields, or parks continue to shrink. Considering the town's future needs, board members unanimously agreed that acquisition of this property would be in the long-term best interest of the community. Working with town manager Jeff Hull, town council, and with the support of residents who attended a special town meeting in November, the property was purchased for nearly $1,725,000 from the Catholic Archdiocese of Boston. Due to the town's deliberate steps to build and maintain free cash revenues, reserves, town meeting was able to draw upon the $14,190,933 to purchase the properties, no borrowing required. Collective bargaining agreements were executed with the police superiors, firefighters, and public safety dispatchers. The ability to work constructively with representatives from each of the employee groups and reach agreement on the terms and condition of employment is critical to continue smooth operations of various departments. As individuals elected by you, the residents of Wilmington, our mission is to provide broad policy direction to the town manager and his department chiefs to create a safe and friendly place to live and work where residents of all ages can exercise and develop their minds and bodies. The implementation and execution of these policies could not occur without the dedication and commitment of the town employees and many volunteers who serve on boards and committees. We saw that this evening. We sincerely thank them for their dedication. On behalf of the board, I wish to give a special acknowledgement to the great work in and day out of the town manager Jeff Hull, Assistant Town Manager Kendra Amaral, and the board's Administrator Assistant Beverly Dalton, and the staff in the town manager's office. I speak to each member of the board in extending our heartfelt appreciation to residents who place your trust and to guide the affairs of the town, and thank you for extending this opportunity to serve this great community. And it's a great privilege to be here and serve this board, and this is a great board. We've done a lot of business in this community and this board, perhaps I think any board I've served on is perhaps one of the best boards this community's has developed, and we're getting the people's work done. And I just want to say, I'm really proud to represent you guys here this evening and also Judy that's not here with us this evening. Thank you.
Jeff, communications. Thank you. All right, Jeff.
Under communications, we have correspondence from Police Chief Mike Begonis. This is with regard to distracted driving and there's correspondence that actually came from the Mass Office of Public Safety and Security. Distracted driving is an issue, as you know, across the country. In this particular case, from April 10th through the 15th, it's being a targeted issue in, across the state. April is the National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. In 2012, 3,328 deaths and 421,000 injuries were attributed to distracted driving in the United States. Police departments will be vigilant in their efforts with regard to this dangerous activity. An offense under the distracted driving statute carries a $100 fine and can be as high as 500 for subsequent offenses. Drivers under the age of 18 are also subject to license or permit suspension for up to one year. Massachusetts laws make it illegal for any operator of a motor vehicle to use a mobile telephone or any handheld device capable of accessing the internet to manually compose, send, read, or any electronic messages while operating a motor vehicle.
Jeff, on that point, I think you're, yeah, I just wanted to take note of the banner. I don't know if the cameras are able to pan over there, but there's a fairly sizable "Park the phone before you drive" banner that's on the sidewall here in the, in this room. I thought it was worth, I assumed that it was going to be pointed out in the context of that memo, so I just wanted to make, make people aware of it.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm not much for repeating things unnecessarily, but I think there's a couple stats here that are bear worth, you know, they bear repeating. 3,328 deaths in 2012, 421,000 injuries. And when you, when you start to think about all the other things that cause injury and illness and death, you know, throughout the country, it's hard for me to fathom those numbers for any other illness, injury, or anything else that is absolutely avoidable, you know, and so I just think it's worth repeating those numbers and I appreciate that the chief has brought them to our attention and, and the bigger picture, that we recognize the awareness this month.
Very good.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
There's a memorandum to the board from me that addresses fire department promotions. As the Board of Selectmen knows, Fire Chief Ed Bradbury will be retiring on May 31st after nearly 41 years of dedicated service to the town of Wilmington. My expectation is to announce his successor no later than the board's first meeting in May. As you know, the fire department's senior command staff is in the midst of the most significant transition in many years. With a recent retirement in February and retirements over the next few months, there will be turnover in the position of chief and at least three lieutenants with a combined 145 years of service. The process for the appointment and promotion is governed by civil service law. Vacancies are posted with candidates being drawn from a civil service list. Historically, promotions to the rank of lieutenant have been based upon a written civil service exam. In anticipation of the upcoming vacancies, an assessment center was conducted in February. Firefighters interested in promotion were required to sign up to participate in the assessment center, which consisted of a series of interviews with current or former chiefs from other communities. Twelve candidates participated in the process and received their rankings. Over the next few weeks, interviews will be conducted with candidates on the civil service list to further assess their ability to serve in a leadership role with the department. Appointments to fill the lieutenant vacancies will be made over the next several months. Also, just as an update, the memorandum to the town clerk regarding town-owned land, I would just note that there were five parcels, actually six parcels, that were proposed for purchase and they were reflected on the town meeting warrant. Article 38, which is a request to deem a portion of Page Street surplus, my determination based upon a. based upon a review and recommendation from the committee that the property review committee was to deem that not surplus. Also, Articles 39 and 41, these are parcels located on Poplar Street, again, based upon consideration from the property review committee and my own review, these properties are deemed not surplus to the town's need. Article 42, 42 and 43, which are parcels located off of Sheldon Avenue, these parcels are deemed surplus. In the case of Article 42, the value, minimum value, would be $5,100. In the case of Article 43, the minimum value is, as deemed by the assessor, $16,800. And then finally, Article 45, which is for town-owned property located off of Marion Street, this property is deemed surplus, and the minimum value or bid would be $25,600. The board received a letter from Lou Semeglia, the Director of Veteran Services. It reads as follows: Wilmington Department of Veteran Services and Memorial Day Committee invite you to participate in honoring all our veterans, past and present, on Monday, May 26, 2014. We will assemble at the Market Basket Parking Lot at 9:30 a.m. with a step-off time of 10 a.m. We will proceed to the Wildwood Cemetery for this year's Memorial Day service, starting at 11 a.m. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Correspondence from the Mass Municipal Association, this is just an advisory about legislation, actually a legislation from the governor with regard to a so-called pothole and winter recovery program. Essentially, $30 million is being made available to municipalities for work associated with road improvements due to the difficult winter we had. Specifically, the money is available for repairs of potholes, cracking, signage, guardrails, and other damage, as well as repairs to municipal vehicles and transportation facilities. The funding is going to be based upon the Chapter 90 formula and will be distributed in a similar manner. Correspondence from Mass DOT, this is really a follow-up to the MMA's alert, which indicates that Wilmington's portion of that $30 million is $113,604. Again, this is a reimbursable amount. In the projects, we have to have specific projects ready to go by or before June 30 with the expectation that all related expenditures are completed by September 30 of this year.
Is it fair to assume that we'll be able to use up the allotment 100%?
Yes. Yeah, we will definitely use that money. We have correspondence from the ABCC, Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. This is with respect to a change in officers and directors on the board at the 99 Restaurant. There are 39 separate communities that are impacted by this, and the ABCC is essentially advising the town that they have gone through their own review of this request for change in board of directors, and they deem that the requested transaction is in compliance with MGL Chapter 138. Arrangements have been made for the corporation to pay all the $200 application fees directly to the Commonwealth. The one piece that the town will be responsible for is upon contact from the local 99, the submission of the Form 43 to the ABCC. We have additional correspondence, a bulletin from the Mass Municipal Association, this is with regard to House Ways and Means budget, projection for the upcoming fiscal year, and there are some noteworthy points. The House Ways and Means is proposing a budget of $36 million, which is $191 million lower than the governor's proposed budget. It avoids tax increases proposed by the governor. It also, of note, increases the unrestricted general government aid, which is aid that comes specifically to the cities and towns' general government. The proposal is to increase that by 25 million. They're also proposing to mirror the governor's recommendation for an increase in Chapter 70, which is education aid, by 99.5 million, which essentially translates into an increase of $25 per student, at least throughout the Commonwealth. There are a number of other provisions here that apply, but those are the high points. We have correspondence from the governor with regard to the Chapter 90 funding. As you know, Chapter 90 is the money that cities and towns receive for conducting improvements to roadways. The governor recommended level funding in fiscal 2015 of $200 million. For Wilmington, that translates into $757,363. That money unfortunately is not available at the moment because it's relying upon approval of the Transportation Bond Bill, which is in committee. House and Senate are trying to reach agreement on the terms, so until that happens, we will not have access to those funds.
Jeff, is that the bond bill, the 10-year, or is there a 5-year? Was that the one where... It was, I think I see it here, 10-years, where they would guarantee fund the same amount each year over the course of 10-years? Is that the same bill that I'm thinking of?
Well, the MMA is looking for the state to guarantee an amount for 10-years. Whether that ultimately comes into play is another question. There's a number of different projects that are associated with the Transportation Bond Bill. Another one that is impacted is our own project on Glen Road, but it's a lot, much larger than the 200 million that's specific to Chapter 90.
Yeah, very well, thank you.
We have correspondence that I sent to Mr. James Trombley, just to read a portion of it. "I am writing to you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and in compliance with MGL Chapter 51, Section 15, as it pertains to the appointment of a member to the Board of Registars. Please accept the letter as official notification from the Board of Selectmen that the term of Edward L. Sousa, a member of the Board of Registars representing the Republican Party, will expire on April 30, 2014. Mr. Sousa has indicated that he is interested in the reappointment." And then it goes on to reference the specifics of Section 15 of Chapter 51. So we'll await a response there. We have correspondence from Michael Skanel, who is HSE and supervisor for Lubrizol Advanced Materials located on 207 Lowell Street, and he is inviting the board to an open house at their facility on April 30 from 3:30 to 5:00. Just briefly, he notes Lubrizol Advanced Materials is a division of Lubrizol Corporation headquartered in Whitcliff, Ohio. As a member of the American Chemistry Council, Lubrizol has made a commitment to Responsible Care Initiative. Participating in the initiative demonstrates Lubrizol's commitment to the safety and well-being of its employees, their families, neighbors, town, and the environment. The Wilmington facility continues to supply quality customer polyurethanes for medical and industrial applications." So the invitation is for an open house on the 30th. If the board could just let me know or let Beverly know if you're interested in participating, we have to RSVP by tomorrow.
I should let you know, I've already... There was an RSVP to Mr. Skanel, and I did so directly, just FYI to you.
We have, under Board to Consider, Board to Consider, this is a gift of land that the Conservation Commission is recommending approval on. Vacant land off Kitter Place, Map 51, Parcel 10, is being donated to the town, to the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. The parcel contains approximately 5.29 acres plus or minus. The Commission, at its regularly scheduled meeting on December 4, 2013, voted to accept the donation. The Conservation Commission respectfully requests the board vote to accept this property as well. The Commission feels it's in its best interest, in best interest of the town, to preserve this land and protect the watershed. Just by way of information, I did confirm with Carol Hamilton, the Director of Planning and Conservation, a significant portion of this property is wet. Its northerly property line is along the Mill Brook. It's also a landlocked parcel, but it is, the Conservation Commission's recommendation at the board, accept the property.
Is there a motion to accept as described by the town manager?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Selectmen Semaglia, second by Selectmen Newhouse, all those in favor, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a correspondence from Robert Peterson, attorney. This is with regard to a drainage easement for 471 Salem Street. P&amp;G Realty Trust, of which I am a trustee, is the record owner of the property at 471 Salem Street. The existing home and the lot was recently demolished, and a new home has been constructed in its place. In the process of obtaining building permits, I raised the issue with the Town Engineering Department of the serious drainage problems that occur on Route 62 directly in front of this home. During periods of heavy rain, the street directly in front of the property floods. When the water reaches a level that is above the curb, the water runs directly across the property to an area in the back that belongs to the town of Wilmington. Because of the poor drainage on Salem Street in this area, the Town Engineering Department asked if I would consider granting them a drainage easement through my property for the purpose of constructing a culvert on Salem Street that would drain the entire length of my property underground and connect to the existing drainage area in the rear of my property belonging to the town. Because of the severity of the issue, I have agreed to grant the town a drainage easement across my property in the hopes that it will alleviate a continuing concern for myself and the town. And there's an executed drainage easement that's attached for the board's consideration. Mr. Peterson has been working, as it notes here, with the Engineering Department. I've also talked to Mike Woods, the Public Works Director. He's had some conversations and reviewed the drainage easement and is in agreement and recommends that the drainage easement be authorized by the board.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Semaglia, all those in favor, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
We have a request from Mark Frujot, who is the Scout Master from Troop 136. As we have done in the past three years, Troop 136 in Wilmington requests permission to use the old Swain School site and adjoining parking lot for yard sale. The yard sale is one of the major fundraising events that the troop holds each year to raise money for their programs. We would like to hold the yard sale on May 31 from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We would like to also reserve June 7 from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. as a rain date. We will make certain that the site is cleaned after the event, and any unsold goods will be removed. We appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Fine with the dates?
Yes, there's no problem with those dates. June, let's see, May 31 is, I believe, a Saturday, yes.
When does the... It doesn't matter, they're Sundays. I was thinking of the farmer's market.
I'll send.
Is there a recommendation, or I mean, is there a motion to approve?
Just win from Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no, that's great. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll move to approve the request of the Boy Scouts to use the Swain School area and parking lot for their yard sale.
Is there a second? Motion made by Selectmen Shampoo, second by Selectmen Newhouse, all those in favor, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
We have a letter from Patricia Romano. This is, she is the Vice President of Wilmington Band Parents and Friends. Wilmington Band Parents and Friends request permission to sell coffee, popcorn, cold drinks, and balloons in front of Roman House during this year's Memorial Day Parade. We will obtain the necessary permits required from the Wilmington Board of Health. If you need any additional information, please contact me.
And everything's good?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Semaglia, all those in favor, unanimous. Thank you. All right.
We have a request from Jennifer DeFeo for a block party. Dear Board of Selectmen, kindly accept this letter on behalf of the residents of Liberty Street. We are seeking to have a block party on Saturday, June 28, 2014, from noon until around midnight. To ensure the safety of our children, we intend to prohibit motor vehicle traffic on the street from 19 Liberty, right after the intersection with Liberty and Bancroft Streets, to where the streets end at 25 Liberty Street. The neighbors on both sides of Liberty have approved this proposal. We hosted this event for the last two years without incident. We want to have a DJ and other types of music and children activities such as face painting and inflatable bounce houses and balloon animals. It is the intent of the neighbors to have a barbecue during the event with each house preparing or serving some food and beverages. One family will host a children's movie in the evening in their yard. We also are scheduling a basketball game, horseshoes, and other games. Thank you for your consideration.
Sounds like a fun time. Can you agree with that, Jeff? Not a problem?
Not a problem.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll move to approve the request made by Jen DeFeo for their block party on June 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Selectmen Shampoo, second by Selectmen Newhouse, all those in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you.
We have a request from Sergeant Michael Bodnar, the Minutemen. He writes to the Board of Selectmen, gentlemen, Wilmington, the Minutemen would like to schedule a meeting with you on using the Common for marching and drilling during a one-day slash night a month during this summer, June, July, August, preferably first Thursday of the month, from 6 to 8 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
This would be on the town common. I believe it hasn't been done, I don't think it was done last year, but it has been done in the past.
Do we... Is there overlaps of concerns? Scheduling issues that you're aware of with Thursday nights?
No.
I see the chief's in the room. Chief Begonis, you have... The Minutemen have done their drills and training on the Common, I think, in years past, and there have been no concerns. Is that true?
We're flexible as far as the date and time, but we requested...
The second Tuesday of every month.
Do you have... I mean, how many guys drill out there when they did it a few years ago?
We've got a few new members since we drilled a few years back, and I'd say somewhere between eight and a dozen. And like I said, it'll be shortly, between 6 and 7 to 8 o'clock. No firing, of course, just, I mean, short and sweet.
Well, I don't... If you're going to do it every Thursday, that's fine. It's a public common. I mean, unless you had 40 guys there, I wouldn't understand why you'd actually need permission. It's a public common to go march around. If there was a conflict, a wedding or something, or an event, a movie night, perhaps if it runs on a Thursday, are some of the movie nights rain dates on a Thursday?
Well, I think the premise is because any kind of a scheduled activity, the Board of Selectmen typically have authorized those kinds of activities similar to the July Fourth request for permission.
I have no objection personally, as long as you've already articulated a willingness to be flexible if there's other events or groups or organizations that need that space for a scheduled activity. So, you know, based on that, I would move to approve the request with that as a contingency.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I second the motion for marching and drilling during the date specified.
Very good. Motion made and second by?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, last time this came up, I voted against it. I didn't, I stated a bunch of reasons why I still feel the same way. I only mentioned that, I don't expect that I'm going to change anybody's mind, but, you know, I won't go into all the reasons that I think, but.
All right, there's a motion made by Selectmen Shampoo, second by Selectmen Salmaglia. All those in favor? All those opposed? When the three in favor, when are opposed, Selectmen Newhouse? All right, very good, thank you.
If there's a conflict in dates, we're capable to another time.
Working out with the town manager.
Would like to start in June, it's one night a month. Thank you, guys.
Good luck with that. Public comments, any public comments? I see there's no public comments. Before I go to new business and community reports, I'd just like to make a comment that the month of April is Autism Awareness Month. And if you notice those lights down at the town common, the blue lights, and it's just a reminder to all of us, and I can say on a personal note, I have a son that's autistic, and the Special Ed Department has done an outstanding job with my son Christopher. He's still part of the school system until age twenty-two, I believe, and I just, kudos goes out to them, and it really means a lot to my wife and myself and my children. And if there's anyone else that'd like to make a comment on that, feel free to do so.
Just to echo what you said, Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing attention to it. Thank you for recognizing the DPW and the town for doing really a nice job at the common to get people's attention. According to latest CDC numbers, one in sixty-eight children is diagnosed with autism in one in forty-two boys, so pretty compelling statistics in terms of how important the issue is to, to understand and to begin to solve.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I want to echo, I appreciate the way, a lot, many, several folks have reached out to me personally as well as through electronic means to first ask what was going on at the common. I guess they hadn't seen some of the notifications, and when I advised them that it was in honor of or in respect of Autism Awareness Month to a person, they've all been very impressed with that. So whoever's brainstormed that was, I offer kudos and obviously congratulations and thanks to the town for making that happen.
Yeah, it was outstanding to see that. And if we're all set with that, new business and community reports, and I'll start on this side of the table.
Mr. Chairman, one of the, I'd like to comment on, I've got some notes here that I have. I'm not one who typically has a whole lot to say about things that are published in the, in the print media, but I was really taken aback by a, by a letter that had gone into one of the local newspapers recently, and it addressed the position that the board has taken relative to the Woodfield School and including the, the warrant article in this year's town meeting warrant. And I, you know, having, the author of the letter is the former chairperson of Wilmington Historical Commission Carolyn Harris. Having worked with Mrs. Harris on a number of things, you know, having sat with the, with Mrs. Harris at the kitchen table at the Richardson Estate, trying to work through, you know, something that would enable the town to preserve that, having supported the, the town meeting appropriation for the Butters Farmhouse, having been involved in the Sawmill Brook acquisition, things like that, I was, I was kind of surprised that as much attention seemed to be given towards taking on a statement that supposedly I had made at the Finance Committee hearing. And the, and the quote here was, it was stated by Selectmen Newhouse that the Wilmington Historical Commission has put the town of Wilmington, quote, "in hark" for six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Butters Farm. This is simply not true. I would agree with Mrs. Harris, this is simply not true, and that's why I didn't say that. And, you know, I know that Mrs. Harris wasn't there, you know, maybe the information that was related to her certainly was inaccurate. I presume that it was inaccurate, you know, in an innocent way, but, you know, folks should understand that at no time have I indicated that the town has quote-unquote "gone in hark" for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. To the contrary, at that public hearing, I indicated that the town, our legislative delegation, our historical commission, the voters at, at town meeting back in two thousand and six, we're talking eight years ago now, that I had not seen many occasions where there was such a cooperative effort and an overwhelming agreement on how something should be brought forward. And the, what I did say at that meeting that I absolutely stand by is that with all of the, the funds that have been allocated to that project and put into that property, and this letter goes on to itemize where all the money came from, and I, I agree, and that's where I come up with six hundred fifty thousand, that of all the money that's been put in that project and notwithstanding the effective work that the Historical Commission and our legislative delegation had done on that, the fact remains that we're six hundred fifty thousand dollars into that project and it's not finished. And, and I make that point not to knock anyone, I make that point to demonstrate how the prospect of, of somehow securing three to five million dollars to, you know, to renovate or preserve that current building, to me, is simply not realistic. Now, having, having seen this letter and another letter to the editor, and by the way, I went and, just to be sure, I went and got the disc, and anybody's welcome to the disc for that meeting. I mean, it, it's just not something I said. And what I did notice when I went back and watched that meeting and kind of lived through it a second time, one of the things that the chairperson of the Historical Commission, which she had indicated, actually makes sense to me, and I'm in agreement with. She made the point that with some time, the Historical Commission may be able to find buyers for portions of the structure, for, you know, pieces of the building to be able to preserve. I know that there also has been much talk about if they had time, perhaps somebody would move and relocate the building to another site. From my perspective, if the town meeting deems it appropriate to allocate a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the demolition of the building, even if that were a unanimous vote, that's not going to happen until next fiscal year. At the earliest, I would think sometime around September. So if we're talking about two viable options, which I would readily concede, if two viable options are to have private interests purchase pieces of the building, or have private interests relocate the building, why are we going to spend the next four weeks debating it? Why are we going to debate it on the town meeting floor rather than just going and seeing what's out there? So, I mean, I would much rather, I think we ought to appropriate the money, I think we ought to do it this town meeting, I think the money ought to be ready to go and come the fall. If there's no other alternatives, the money ought to be used for that purpose. Time is money. But if somebody steps forward between now and then, wants to relocate that building and renovate it on their own dime someplace else, I'm more than happy to save a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, so I would like to see, rather than sitting around while we kick this around for the next two months, why don't we move forward, ask the town manager to prepare a request for proposals to see if there are any private interests out there that either want to relocate the building or purchase pieces of it. Maybe, maybe the issue is resolved. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking for the board's support of that and ask the town manager to move forward with that. If that's something, you know, that we can, why sit around and wait to do that? Let's put it out there. If, if that's realistic, you know, nine months, well, nine months might be overstating it, but between now and, and September, October, hey, maybe, maybe somebody comes forward and it doesn't cost the town anything. So I put that on the table for the board's consideration and I think it makes sense to do.
Well, I'll tell you, I think that's a great idea, you know, and I could definitely rally around something like that, and I don't think that brings conflict with anybody in the community, given, as you stated, Mr. Newhouse, an opportunity, have an RFP set out and, you know, someone's out there that wants to move it, I'd be in favor of that. I think that's a great idea, I really do.
Yeah, I have the unenviable placement of being on the opposite side of when the vote ought to take place, at which town meeting it ought to, it ought to take place. And I say unenviable because Mr. Newhouse always makes a very, very good case. Nevertheless, in spite of our sort of difference of opinion on that one little piece of the picture, I have no, no objection at all to what you just put forth, and it makes perfect sense to me. Regardless of how the vote takes place at town meeting, if something materializes from this request for proposal, it serves everybody. So I have, I would, I would support your, if you want to make a motion or something, I would, I would second it.
I move that the board request the town manager to prepare a request for proposals for those two purposes, and to, to the extent possible, include the Historical Commission in that effort.
I'll second that.
I think it's a great motion, a motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Salmaglia. All those in favor? You know, I'm sorry, and it's unanimous. Very good, that's a great point, really, that's a good one. Thank you.
And I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very well said, Mike, and I do agree with it. I just want to get the word out, as everybody knows, the Memorial Day Parade is coming up, and if any organizations, church groups, nonprofits are interested in marching the parade, if they could contact the Department of Veteran Services, nine seven eight, six nine four, two zero four zero. We can get you the rules, guidelines and an application so we can all enjoy a beautiful Memorial Day Parade and then the very, very well-run, very nice ceremony down at the cemetery afterwards.
Very good.
I don't have a report per se, but Mr. Hall brought it up a few moments ago and it got into my head, so I, if you're willing to give us a fifteen-second update of the status of construction or the beginning of construction, I hope, of the intersection of Glen Road and Middlesex. I know that that was sort of on the radar screen to hopefully be beginning soon, and I haven't really heard about it in a while, so can you give us an update?
Yes, the, if you recall back, I think this, when we last had this on the agenda, the Mass DOT had indicated that this project was on track to, to begin with advertising to be done in January of this past year, January fourteenth specifically, because the state would put it out for advertising, get interested contractors and then make the award. Unfortunately, it's my understanding that because the Transportation Bond Bill is hung up in the legislature, this project is hung up as well. So the project has not been advertised, and it doesn't appear, will, it will be advertised until the Transportation Bond Bill is actually signed into law. So, you know, the expectation was if it was advertised in, in January, that we could begin construction this construction season, and then it would run through this construction season and the next construction season. At this point, we're at least three or four months delayed. It just pushes the project back that number of months, so we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern pending the resolution of the Bond Bill.
And the, that's in caucus right now at the House of Representatives, is that right? The House has possession of the Bond Bill?
Well, the House and Senate, they have a caucus trying to work out details and reach agreement on apparent differences in both bills. I spoke with a representative from the Mass Municipal Association about a week ago to find out what the status was, and because it's in caucus, there's not a whole lot of information coming out about what the issues are that are hanging it up. So it's just kind of a waiting game at this point.
To whatever degree it makes sense, I don't know if residents are interested or willing to do so, but maybe an email or a phone call to Representative Misselli or Senator Tara's office, perhaps maybe would just spur things along. I, I don't know that it was, I think they, they probably recognize our, our desire to see some, some action being taken there, but thank you for the update. I just simply want to close out personally by recognizing that tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of the horrible events that took place at the Boston Marathon last year. And I guess specifically, I just wanted to, once again, I guess, pay tribute to the Collier family. I know many of, at least some of them still live here in town, and so my, my sentiments, my sympathies go to them on this sad anniversary. And lastly, I know, Jeff, you're going to talk about coming dates here in a few moments. The Little League Parade is this Saturday, and I typically love to participate in that. I think it's a great Wilmington tradition, but I regret I can't be there. So I wish all of the, the baseball and softball players a fantastic season. I can't do it personally to you on Saturday, so have a wonderful season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shampoo. You want to say something, Jeff?
Yes, if I could just reference a memo that came from Tina Stewart, the library director, this is an update with regard to the library's strategic planning process. This correspondence is a request to update the Board of Selectmen about the library's strategic planning process at their meeting on April fourteenth. The Wilmington Memorial Library has embarked on an important strategic planning process with two ambitious goals, to envision what role the library could and should play in the lives of Wilmington residents, and to set a course for growth, change and excellence for the future. The following community representatives are serving on this Strategic Planning Committee: Kendra Amaral, Assistant Town Manager, Steve Bjork, Friends of the Library, Virginia Barnish, School Committee, Jean Chan, Arts Council, Diana De Gregorio, Community Fund, Jonathan Eaton, Finance Committee, James Lemay, Library Trustee, Alan Landry, Retiree, Judy O'Connell, Board of Selectmen, Jo Marie Omahoney, Women of Wilmington, Kathleen Reynolds, Historical Commission, Raju Tavadi, Library Page, and Nancy Valley, Chamber of Commerce. The Strategic Planning Committee is serving in advisory capacity as we move through the planning process with the guidance of Planning Consultant Barbara Eloveras of Sage Consulting. The strategic planning, the strategic plan is expected to be completed by the end of the summer. After approval by the Board of Library Trustees, the plan will be submitted to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. In order to develop a plan that best serves Wilmington, the library needs community feedback on how residents use the library now and how they want to use it in the future. Over the past few weeks, we have hosted focus groups with teens, parents and representatives of the community organizations. A community forum was held on April nine. The library will be hosting its second community forum on Tuesday, April twenty-nine, at one PM. Whether you are a regular library user or not, residents are invited to attend this forum to express their opinions on library services today and improvements or changes you want to see for the future. In addition, residents are asked to complete the library survey that is on the library's website, www.wilmlibrary.org, from April fourteenth to April twenty-sixth. Hard copies of the survey are available at the library, Town Hall and Senior Center. And just to note that forum on the twenty-ninth is at the library.
Very good, thank you. Jeff, you want to bring us to important dates? Thank you.
Tomorrow evening, April fifteenth, the Entile Farm Development Committee will hold its next meeting. It's at six o'clock here at the Town Hall, in fact, in this room. April sixteenth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. April sixteenth, tiny tots kids club registration, Town Hall Auditorium, five PM to six thirty PM. April nineteenth, as was previously noted, Little League opening day. April nineteenth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. April nineteenth, Easter egg hunt, town common, two PM. April twenty-first, town offices are closed due to Patriots Day. April twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, curbside collection of yard waste. April twenty-third, brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. April twenty-sixth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. April 26th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 26th, Annual Town Elections, polls open, 7:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. April 27th, Wear One Wilmington, 5K Run for Wilmington/Kim Forte Walk. April 28th is the Board of Selectmen's next meeting here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. And then, May 3rd is the Annual Town Meeting. Middle School Auditorium begins at 10:30 AM.
All set? Very good. Judy, we hope you're feeling better. Is the motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Salmaglia. All those in favor, unanimous, and thank you and have a nice night.